Welcome, 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 everybody. This evening at 5:00 PM, we had a budget work session that was exciting and informative. After that, we had our executive session at 6:15 where we discussed matters of litigation and personnel matters. We will begin today's meeting with a presentation from our auditors, Zelenkovsky-Axelrod.
Good evening, everybody. I apologize, I'm in the process of hopefully getting my voice back. I lost it over the weekend, but thank you for allowing me to be here this evening to present the township's 2024 audit results to you, to everybody. My name is Timir. I'm a partner with the firm and oversee the township's audit. For 2024, we express an unmodified opinion on the township's financial statements. What this essentially means is that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. As part of the 2024 audit, there was a single audit as the township did expend more than $750,000 in federal funds, which required a single audit. That was the highway planning and construction program. We did procedures over the compliance and internal control procedures as required over that program. We did not find any deficiencies, and we're also issuing an unmodified opinion on compliance for major programs for the single audit as well. And just to jump back, the financial statement opinion can be found on page one of the report, just for everybody's reference. As part of our audit, we're required to assess the township's internal controls for both major and non-major control processes. As part of that process, we did not identify any deficiencies in the township's control process. Had we found any deficiencies, we would have issued a management letter comment and made you guys all aware of that, but we did not identify any deficiencies, so therefore we did not issue a management letter comment. In footnote one of the township's report, I believe it's on page 29, where we disclose new accounting principles that were adopted by the township in the 2024 audit. As you can see, I do have a typo. It should be GASB number 99, compensated absences, but GASB 99, 101, were all adopted by the township in the 2024 audit. It didn't have any effect on the township's financial statements, but just for transparency and full disclosure, we disclose that to you guys. Some financial results for the township, and this is net position entity-wide financial statements. This can be found on pages 12 and 13 of the township's report. On the statement of net position, the statement of activities is essentially your full accrual basis of accounting, balance sheet, and income statement, for lack of a better term. The township ended the year with a total net position of $43.8 million. This is an increase of $5.3 million from the prior year. That $43.8 million is comprised of net investment capital assets of $28.8 million, restricted net position of $2 million, and unrestricted net position of $13 million. The $2 million restricted is comprised of $12,000 from, for public safety purposes, which is comprised of your fire and ambulance funds. $645,000 is restricted for culture and recreation, derived from your park and recreation fund, and $1.3 million is restricted for highway and streets, and this is derived from your liquid fuels and roads and bridges funds at the fund level. So talking about your governmental funds, which can be found on pages 15 and 16, or 14 and 16, sorry, of the township's report, this is all of your governmental funds. They ended the year with a fund balance, a total fund balance of $15.7 million. This is a slight increase from the prior year of $74,000. The $15.7 million, the fund balance is comprised of non-spendable of $158,000, which is essentially your prepaid assets at year end, restricted of $2.1 million, assigned of $7.9 million, and that $7.9 is just assigned for future capital projects, and unassigned. The unassigned, both fund balance and net position that we talked about both in the previous slide and currently, is essentially what the township has to spend on general government services going forward. They're not restricted or assigned for any purposes. They're just, can be spent freely on general government services going forwards. All of the funds at the governmental fund level had fund balance increases, except for the general fund, which we'll discuss on the next slide, as well as the capital projects fund, which, you know, its purpose is to spend down capital funds that have been allocated for capital projects. So that was the only fund that had a decrease in fund balance year over year. Also, talking about the governmental funds, the combination or the detail of the non-major governmental funds can be found on pages 16 and 61 of the township's report. Excuse me, sorry. The general fund, which is the main operating fund of the township, again, it's also located on pages 14 and 16 of the township's report, ended the year with a fund balance of $5.7 million. This is a decrease of $51,000, a slight decrease of $51,000 from the prior year. That $5.7 million fund balance is comprised of that same $158,000, which is your prepaid's, and then your unassigned fund balance of $5.5 million. The general fund ended the year with total revenues of $12.1 million, which is a $1.3 million, it was over budget by $1.3 million, driven mainly by your earned income and your local services taxes. Total expenditures during the year ended at $10.7 million, and that actually came in .5 million under budget. That was mainly driven by decrease or reduced expenses for your public safety and public works compared to budget. The fund ended the year with a total excess of revenues over expenditures of $1.4, or revenues over expenditures of $1.4 million, but the fund did transfer out $1.44 million from the general fund to the capital projects, which resulted in that .5, over $51,000 decrease. So had it not been for that transfer of $1.44 million, it certainly would have, you know, ended the year in a positive fashion. Just to wrap up, so I know before we talked about GASB statements that need to be implemented or that were implemented during the year. GASB's number 1, 2, 3, and 4 are GASB to be implemented in the coming years. We will help out Ken and his team with the adoption to ensure that they're adopted in accordance with the standards. And then before I close, I just kind of want to touch on the township's pension trust funds, the police and the non-uniform. Both of those funds had, saw gains in the current year of $1.3 and $2 million a year over year, mainly due to your investment returns. So I know I didn't highlight, put a slide up to highlight those, but just kind of wanted to point that out, that those funds are trending in the right direction as well, so. And thank you for the opportunity to serve the township. I apologize for scratching through this.
Feel better. Good job. Thank you.
If there's any questions, I'm happy to take those. If I can answer them, great. If not, I can certainly follow up.
I don't have any questions, but thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I do want to say, I want to thank our finance department. They had, went through this audit beautifully and keep our books perfect, and that is amazing. And I'd like to also congratulate the township for doing such a good job with our finances to get such a great report.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to this team. So, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Good night. Next on the agenda is public comment on agenda items. Anybody would like to speak? Announcements. The next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held on Tuesday, November 18th at 7:00 PM. November is National Veterans and Military Families Month. The Doylestown Township Administration Office will be closed on Tuesday, November 5th in observance of election, oh, November 4th.
There we go.
In observance for Election Day, and Tuesday, November 11th, in observance of Veterans Day. Doylestown Township Police Department is hosting a free community event Wednesday, November 5th, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM at the township building. The event will focus on safe and enjoyable biking throughout the township. The Chapman Road Bridge will undergo repairs beginning October 27th, with work expected to be completed on June 30th, 2026. During this period, Chapman Road will be closed to all traffic 24 hours a day. A full detour will be in place directing motorists to use Pine Run Road to Lime Kiln Road and Ferry Road. Visit the township website for updates. Also, keep up to date with township news and events by signing up for our e-newsletter. Just go to www.doylestownpa.org. The e-news is sent out every Friday at 4:00 PM. All right. So next is minutes, regular meeting minutes.
Move for the approval of the regular meeting minutes for September 16, 2025.
I'll second.
I do have a change. On page two, and the top of, bottom of page two, and top of page three, it says Ms. Herring went on to say that she read the ordinance and that the day is in violation. It should have said not in violation. There's also a typo at the last sentence that says that, of the words sympathetic.
I amend my motion to include those changes.
All right.
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The budget work session, has everybody had a chance to read that?
Move for the approval of the budget work session minutes from October 9th, 2025.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence, B.C. Cares Pumpkin Fest.
I move for the approval of a warning, a week fee waiver to B.C. Cares for the Pumpkin Fest event on September, can't be.
October.
Oh, sorry, October, 2025.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Friends of Library fundraising, they're looking for a waiver of $680.
Has the Park and Rec group weighed in on this? And what is that $650 comprised of?
The approximately 680 waivers of various.
The kitchen and.
kitchens and parts of the building and furniture and things that they will need. There are representatives here this evening. They have been working with our Park and Recreation Director to come up with this, and I believe we're good with what they're proposing at this point in time.
So Park and Rec has weighed in on this?
Yeah.
Okay. We got a good head?
Yeah.
I move for the approval then. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next is Temple Judea Rummage Sale. They're looking for a waiver request as well. They have a waiver request for $80.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Reports.
Nothing to report this evening.
Township engineer?
Nothing to report this evening.
Chief?
Yes, this Saturday, we have our national drug takeback event from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We will have two stations in the township. One will be at Doylestown Hospital, and the other will be at White Supermarkets in the Mercer Square Shopping Center.
Fantastic. All right. Director of Operations?
I'm going to have Mr. Torpe address the 2025 road program change order number three.
As we wrap up our 2025 road program, we have a change order three in the amount of $7,050 to accommodate some additional striping and markings using the hot thermoplastic for some trail crossing locations and some yield locations, and we are asking to approve change order three in the amount of $7,050.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Tree pruning.
2025 tree pruning and takedown fall and winter contract. We had some more work to do on a tree program, so we advertised that, and the bids were on Penn Bid, October 14th, four bids were received and opened. As I have summarized in my memo for that, for this contract, Sky High Services LLC was the low bidder at $11,100. From the four bidders, I am asking the board to approve Sky High Services of Collegeville, PA for this contract, please.
For $11,100, so moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is our 2526 rental snow removal equipment with operator. Every year, we advertise this because our winter is coming upon us. This is for snow plowing only, is not for salting operations. October 15th, this was advertised on Penn Bid, and on October 15th, we had three contractors submit for this year. Number of folks we used before, B&amp;E Carts LLC submitted for two vehicles totaling $165 per hour. James and Family Enterprises LLC submitted for two vehicles at $285 per hour, and Effluent Retrieval Services submitted with five vehicles at $175 per hour. I'm asking the board to approve all three contractors that will be utilized for snow removal for this year into 2026 at those rates, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is our New Britain Road Bike Hike Trail. Previously, the board awarded the contract to A&amp;H Cornell &amp; Sons. We have a change order, actually, this is comprised of two change orders, as summarized in the letter from Michael Baker International by Chris Stanford, our bike hike engineer. The first change order is for additional truncated domes for the ADA ramps totaling Second change order is, and I want to just make a little amendment here, is for labor and equipment to mill and pave New Britain Road from basically the backside of Central Park to the overpass over 611, which is right just past the intersection with Rolling Hill Boulevard. So that, that totaled $75,514.50, and I'm asking the board to approve Cornell's change order number one and number two for the New Britain Road Bike Hike Trail project.
I'll take them separately. Move for approval of change order number one, the amount of $3,199.97, A.H. Cornell.
Can I, may I ask a question? May I, Chair?
Can I get a second on this first?
I'll second it.
Okay. Now we can discuss.
So does this, can we get an additional match for the additional cost? Does that?
No, the grant is what it is. The grant totals, the grant funding is the $686, and our match on that is $76,000 for so. At this point, no, we cannot, from my understanding. Is that correct, Stephanie?
Correct.
Yeah. And I failed to mention that, that we had basically 70, somewhere around $70,000 left over in grant money that we're going to use for this, and the difference of 7,000, approximately estimated at $7,000 and change is going to be paid out of our road program.
Got it.
Funds.
So that would fit in with the plans to pave New Britain Road? This is just kind of like getting a jump on it?
Correct. And it's one section, one more section of New Britain Road that will, will be done just from, again, from the park to the 611 overpass.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move for the approval of the second A.H. Cornell contract in the amount of $75,514.50.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Next few items are regarding the Community Recreation Center and Park Improvement Project. Number one is Skeptin Construction Change Order number 16. I think I've been messaging for the past couple months now that this change order was coming, which includes a lot of site revisions. If you've seen in the packet, it had summarized a lot of adds and deducts as part of this change order. So that, along with the installation and supply of wall base in the building itself, the two combined total $57,937.39. I think I was kind of projecting about $50,000. The wall base addition takes it up a little bit, but we've worked with them and come to a final number, and so I'm asking for the board's approval for change order number 16 for Skeptin Construction, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Next item is U.S. Solutions Change Order number nine. The revised change order was placed at your seat. This is for the, the courts lighting upgrade. We were hoping that the service, as it was designed, was going to work with the upgraded lighting. Unfortunately, as the contractor went through the process, we were blowing breakers on the 100-hamp service, so they've basically provided this change order number six, number nine, which is upgrading the service from 100-amp to 200-amp service and all the associated equipment and labor. So I'm asking for the board's approval for this amount of $36,428.1 for U.S. Solutions Change Order number nine, please.
Where's that number coming from? Change order number nine, my document is $38,93.
Oh, I'm sorry. What's your number?
Change order number nine, I have $38,932.
At your seat, where the revised, revised paperwork was provided.
I see the revised paperwork now at my seat.
Reduced, that was reduced by about $2,500 to $36,428.
I will now discard the old thing and look at the new thing and approve, move for the approval of change order number nine in the amount of $36,428.1.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
A question?
Oh, yep.
So did we eat up all the grant money by all the, all the improvements that we had to do? Because we got a USAT grant, right?
Yeah, so I don't know that I can say that. So the grant money's been included in the, in the bond revenue and the, and the project budget. As a matter of fact, I have, which will be, will be sending out, the updated cost estimates for the project, which includes all the spending and the revenue. So at this point, I think we're projecting at, right now, at about a, if all these get approved, at about a deficit of $128,000, but we've received approximately 100, I don't know, Mr. Wallace is here, or is he here?
Oh, he left.
He left. We have over $400,000 in interest from the bond revenue that we are projecting to use to cover that deficit. So I will be sending out the updated financials on the project, probably tomorrow or later this week, so you'll have all the updated information. So we've kind of gone through that, chewed up through that because of all the change orders, but not only the ones for the courts, but other ones as well.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item is, again, the Community Recreation Center and Comfort Cottage Security Cameras Proposal was requested, you know, that we look at, obviously providing cameras for the courts and also for the comfort cottage. So Mr. Shea, our facilities manager, went out to Communications, who is basically a CoStarz vendor that we have been using for all of our basically off-site cameras throughout the park system, the rhombus system, and you got to receive the proposal for $22,001.2616 for 14 cameras, which will be utilized on the courts and the new bathrooms through the park. And so I have this prepared for the board for discussion and consideration for approval.
Well, I move for the approval of the Communications proposal to supply the rhombos security cameras for the Recreation Center and Comfort Cottage in the amount of $22,126.16.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
We're very concerned about the safety of people in our parks.
My next item is, again, the Community Recreation Center. This is related to the patio adjacent to the building, outside patio, and the proposal and the request from the Park and Rec Recreation Department to fence off that patio for their purposes and use. We, again, Mr. Shea went out and received a proposal from Promax Fencing Systems LLC. We've used this vendor before for the, the police secured lot, entry and exit gate, and also for the dog park. They are also a CoStarz vendor. The proposal is to install about 48 lineal feet of four-foot-high fencing on the patio. It does not include gates. We worked with Sinclair, the code director, to discuss how requirements, so we're not going to put gates on the patio, but it will be fencing around the patio totaling $10,689.
Move for the approval of the, award the Promax Fence System proposal in the amount of $10,689.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And my last item is just an acknowledgement. We are working on the bocce courts, and one thing that we did to kind of cost reduction is that we were going with some composite timber for the border of the bocce courts instead of the proposed concrete border. We were working with Skeptin to have them supply the material because we were getting into the cost of the first estimate, which came from the Plastic Lumber Yard LLC Company, was well over the bid limits. When we found that the price from Skeptin was well over $38,000, we did some more digging on, and we found additional companies. And I asked Supervisor Herring and Supervisor Lyons as part of our procurement process for the, the building that was approved, that they approved the ACT composite timber proposal to have Stephanie execute that proposal in the amount of $19,689 to order the material so we can get it delivered and not wait, you know, almost another week or two to get it going. So this is just an acknowledgement by the board that we went through that process and followed our procedures.
As far as the courts go, do you have a rough update on when they might be done?
I don't have an exact date. This lumber is coming in about mid-November, but right now, as I know that the fence posts ran, they actually were on-site today to start doing the color coat, so I'm expecting in the next couple of weeks that that will be done. But, but because the quote-unquote lumber is not kind of coming for the bocce courts until about November 13th, projecting that won't be wrapped up until probably around Thanksgiving in totality.
Will people be able to use the other courts before then, or are we waiting to do it all at once?
Don't know how we're going to.
Okay.
Approach that yet.
Got you.
It'll still be under construction, so I don't know how, but we'll discuss it as it comes closer, but.
Okay.
Be determined.
Assistant Township Manager?
Was that a, do we have an official acknowledgement?
Yeah. We did.
Okay. I'll make sure. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. My first item is that I wanted to inform the board that the EAC received a grant from Bucks Beautiful to purchase native trees for the Sandy Ridge Ashway Basin. As you may know, over the past few years, EAC Chair Heidi Shiver has led efforts to remove invasive species, and with the help of Chris Mason and his team, they've been stump-treating the invasives. So now they're at a point where we'd like to plant and, and begin rebuilding that habitat. Also, just to note that that basin was recognized as a watershed-friendly certified property by Penn State, so it's exciting to see the ongoing efforts. My second item is information about our natural gas supplier procurement. So our current contract expires in April of 2026. Even though it seems far away with winter coming and the market, our energy brokers suggested that we start looking into it now and procure our rate. When I provided the memo on October 17th, the rate was 5.753, and I received an updated rate this afternoon, and it did increase a little bit to 5.81. So my recommendation is to allow the board to authorize myself and Stephanie to sign a contract with a natural gas provider, given the rate is equal to or below 5.85. You know, because I won't be able to do that today, have to do it tomorrow, there may be a slight increase, and if it's above that rate, I can always come back to the board, but if it's within that window, it allows me not to have to come back to the board for that approval.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Township Manager?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
All right. Supervisors, why don't we start with Judy Dixon? She always has a bunch. She always has a bunch of stuff.
I do, thank you, Madam Chair. So earlier this month, Tom Kelso and myself attended the Montgomery and Bucks County Trail Summit. It was held at the Penny Pack Restoration Trust Preserve. It was a trail summit between two counties and Philadelphia, and because of the 31 miles of trails that Doylestown Township has, we were asked to present. Tom Kelso actually presented, and he must have had more questions than anybody else that presented. The main one was, how did Doylestown Township do it? That was what they wanted to know. So we are the North Star of building trails, and everyone wants to know how it happened. Staying on with the Bike Hike Committee, we had a meeting earlier today, and we spent most of the time reviewing the e-bike use ordinance and the bike use ordinance, so I know we're going to get to that later. We also heard from Sergeant Jared Quartz about his upcoming Bike Safety and Trail Summit Trail Etiquette Program, which is November 5th. So I hope a lot of people come out for that, because everyone is concerned about the safety of the youth in particular, of the safety on the trails, the safety of the people using the trails, and making sure that the kids riding the bikes are also safe. Moving on, the EAC, as always, has a lot going on. So last week, we welcomed our two members that the board of supervisors voted in, thank you for that. We're still working on various projects, bird migration awareness, so birds don't hit buildings, promotion of native plants. And we just discussed strategies in regards to dark sky program that we could potentially implement in the future. So stay tuned for that. Lastly, I'll just add, they're also trying, looking at trying to adjust the surge in the deer population, which might be some strategies that we would want to take a look at, because they do ruin a lot of native plants as well as people's gardens. And lastly, we had the Public Sewer and Water Advisory Committee. The 537 Plan was presented, as you know, to PA DEP earlier this year. It came back with some revisions requests, which were just submitted with Carroll Engineering, that we're working on that. So we've submitted those, and hopefully we'll have approval on that quite soon. And the other project that they have going on is the private well testing. We did get the grant for that, so you'll be hearing more about a plan on how we're going to sample private wells throughout the township. And of course, the board will need to approve that, will need to approve that before that would go through, but hoping to possibly do that early next year. That's all I have.
Wow, all right. Barbara?
Well, real quick, the Park and Rec Board had a successful golf outing at the Commonwealth Club, and I think they netted about $35,000 from this year's event. Veterans Advisory Committee for Doylestown Township is planning some activities in conjunction with other veterans groups in the area, so check out E! News, November 11th is Veterans' Day. Hug a veteran, send a card, say thank you. That's all I got.
Dan?
Yes, I'll start with planning. The last planning meeting we had featured a lot of information from Mr. Zavada regarding the Harts Woods property and discussions about where that's going. It was kind of reiterating some of the things this board has already heard about the plans for it. He's had additional meetings with residents in the area, and there were a number of residents who came living in, nearby the property to express their support in favor of it. So the temperature was much lower than it was previously. So that is still continuing to move forward. We will not have a regular planning meeting next Monday, but members of the committee are going on a field trip to the Harts Woods to take a look at it. This weekend, or this past weekend, I attended a summit from, sponsored by Pecado, which is the Bucks County Association of Town officials, and they had a session with several ambulance services across Bucks County, talking about some of the issues they face as far as funding and personnel go, and what we can do as supervisors and other elected officials to possibly help with that. The biggest issue they have is retaining personnel. And as they put it, you know, kind of sobering to hear when they're paying their paramedics $60,000 to $80,000, but that's not enough for them to live in the regions they serve, and this isn't just Doylestown, we're talking the region, without taking on a second job. So these are things we need to look at addressing to help them in the future, and just keeping up communication with our ambulance squadrons.
All right, and for me, I just wanted to inform the public, we have had four budget work sessions right now at this point in the year. We just had our last one right before this meeting, and they are filled with wonderful news. They are all televised and open to the public, and so you can watch any of that if you feel like watching a budget work session on our Facebook page or our YouTube channel. But some of the good news that we have is that our 2025 revenues over expenses exceeded $1.5 million, so we're doing very well this year. We currently have the capacity to cover all of our debt. We're paying down our debt at this point. Our pension is, for all intents and purposes, fully funded with very conservative assumptions. You just heard before this meeting that we had a clean audit from our auditors, which is fabulous, including a single audit, which is a little extra work, and that's for any federal grants that you get over a certain dollar amount. We also had a three-year audit of our state liquid fuels money, and that was a clean audit as well. So things financially are doing very well in our township. I did have on the agenda to have a discussion about fees in lieu of open space. It is my understanding, well, let me start out. Fees in lieu of open spaces is a dollar amount that somebody who does some construction in the, or development in our municipality pays our township if they don't have the open space. We can agree to have them pay us a dollar amount so we can use it to do other things. But I was looking to see if maybe there was a way to increase that, or at least analyze it to see if we're in the right, in the right range with that. I believe that if you want to develop here in the township, you should be compensating the township. So I wanted to see if we could get some agreement with the board to ask, I believe Gilmore would be the, who we would ask, to do an analysis of our fees in lieu of open space to see if we're in the right ballpark?
Is this just, I might be splitting hairs here, but is this just for open space or also the park in lieu of, and the trails in lieu of? We have those as well.
I would be interested in all of them, actually. I did do a little bit of research, and some of the municipalities, and I'm not sure, we're going to have to have our experts look into this for us, but some of them do a percentage of the appraised subdivision. So instead of saying a flat $1,800 a unit, they'll say 10% of the appraised value pre-subdivision. So that might actually make more sense, I don't know, we're going to have to get an analysis of that done.
I think that's a worthy idea.
Okay.
Try it out.
All right.
Do you need a motion?
Let's do a motion.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also attended the Pennsylvania 250 Celebration in Doylestown Borough this weekend. They had Town Criers and Ben Franklin Reenactor. It was a really wonderful event. They had asked us as a township to participate in future events with them and partner with them to celebrate the PA 250, and because we have, as a board, voted to support the PA 250, I thought, what a wonderful partnership. So I wanted to get your approval.
Yes.
I agree.
Do they need a community center room? We have them.
Possibly, I know the people to talk to. Okay, so I don't think we need a motion, but we are there to support them. Okay. Additionally, I've had conversations, I don't know if the public maybe is aware of this, we voted earlier on, I believe this year, to ask the state to allow municipalities to offer rebates to seniors and people with disabilities with their taxes. We managed to pass it here in Doylestown Township, that was the first township in Pennsylvania to do something like that, and that got moved over to our county association, where they proceeded to move that forward as well, and our state association. It was a success. But the next stop is that we have to talk to our state representatives to make sure that they hear that this is something that we would like to do. We would like to give relief to seniors in a certain income bracket and people with disabilities in a certain income bracket. So I just wanted to update everybody that I've had discussions, and I will continue with discussions on that topic, so that we can help our most vulnerable people in our township. And that's everything I have. There's no unfinished business, new business, land development, Doylestown Hill Final Land Development Plan.
Board members, you have in the packet a draft approval letter. This is for final approval. The board has already granted preliminary approval. There have been no substantive changes to any of the conditions, including the standard conditions. There have not been any changes to the waiver request from when you originally approved the preliminary land development. There is one issue we wanted to make the board aware of. They, on their proposed plans, they are required to get a easement from a neighboring property owner for their sewer. We understand there may be a question as to whether or not they are going to be able to get that easement. If they are not, they will have to come back and amend their plans, but it will not impact anything that we're doing here this evening. I believe that the applicant is present, if there are any questions. And as I said, the approval letter that you have in your packet is the same as the one you had for preliminary.
Anybody have any questions? So, is it going to be hard to get the sewer easement?
No, well, we could either, if we don't get the sewer easement, I think it's already been submitted on the revised plans to show the sewer line in the street, so.
You just have to move where the line goes.
It just requires more work.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you restate the motion, or state the motion?
Oh, for the, I'll make the motion for the Doylestown Hill Final Land Development Plan. Do you want me to read all the numbers?
No, 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 just, no.
Okay. So there's a motion, and
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Next property we have is 3375 Bristol Road Final Land Development Plan.
And again, board members, this is the same as we just discussed, this is for final land development approval. The approval letter that you have in your packet, there are no changes to any of the standard conditions, any of the waiver requests. I believe, again, the applicant is present in case there are any questions, and this is ready for approval.
Good evening, thank you. Chelsea Crackerjackman, on behalf of the applicant tonight, Boundless Investments. Representative present is Paul Hudson. I also have Adam Prince here from Fiervani Incorporated, the professional engineer, so if there are any questions at the end, they're probably best suited to answer. So as stated, we're here tonight seeking final land development approval. We were here previously a couple of months ago and received, oop, I accidentally just touched that, I'm going to give this to Mr. Prince to help guide while I'm speaking. We were here just a couple of months ago and received preliminary subdivision approval. The property's 3775 Bristol Road, tax parcel 09, excuse me, 09-007-007. The project is still generally the same as the last time we were before the board, to include a three-unit subdivision, a demolition of the existing improvement, and the lots that are proposed are generally compliant. Over the summer, we went to the zoning hearing board where we sought relief relating to moving the water main extension into the front yard, so as not to cause any issues with the roadway trail extension or the street trees. So at this time, we're still proposing all of the public improvements that were previously included in the plan to include a trail extension along both Bristol Road and Upper State Road. Mr. Prince, if you could highlight that for the board. A new Doylestown Township welcome sign to replace the existing one, and landscaping improvements to the authority infrastructure near the corner of Bristol and Upper State Road. So the only actual change to the plan since the last time we were before the board was, emanated from comments that came from neighbors and from the Planning Commission. I'm happy to take the board's direction as to whether or not you'd like for me to go through those one by one, or if, what has been submitted would suffice.
Anybody interested?
No, I think what's submitted is sufficient.
Okay, thank you very much for that. So the only thing, the four waivers are still being requested from the rest where will, are all will complies. The only comment that we have is respect to number two of the SE Engineers Letter, which requests that the water main easement in favor of the North Wales Water Authority, which Mr. Prince is highlighting on the screen in front of me, is that it abut the public right of way along Bristol Road. So the issue there is because we would like for the easement to be located beyond the street trees and trail, because it doesn't make sense for the trees to potentially interfere with the main, or for there to eventually be a need to disrupt the trail to maintain the main. So that's the only, I would call it, issue, but I'm not sure that it actually is one, and Mr. Prince can speak a little bit more technically on that. Otherwise, all of the remaining items, as I stated, are will complies, and to the extent the board has any other questions, I'll ask Mr. Prince and Mr. Hudson to come on up here.
What are you asking us to do tonight with four waivers outstanding?
We're seeking final land development approval with the request for those waivers, those four waivers. I'm sorry if I was unclear about that, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I think my only question, and I'm not sure, because since I've been on the board, we haven't had to move a sign, do we have, like, requirements of what that sign has to be for the Welcome to Doylestown one? Okay, I just want to make sure that stays consistent with everything else.
The rules.
Yeah, okay.
They're going to improve that area for us as well. It's kind of gotten overgrown.
Sign is so dated, time.
Yeah, it's kind of dated, and we may work with them on an updated sign, not just pop it in.
We're going to spruce it up a little bit.
It is from the 90s.
It's from the 90s. Okay, so I move for the approval of the final land development plan of 3375 Bristol Road, with the conditions as outlined in the condition letter.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
The next property on the agenda is 1796 Southeaston Road, new car wash.
This is, what you have in front of you this evening is a land development agreement and a stormwater management agreement. These have been executed by the applicant, and they are in a form ready for your consideration this evening, and if they are approved, they'll be executed and recorded.
I move for the approval of JDL-DYL Property's Land Development Improvement Agreement.
Do you have a second?
Second, Deb.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move for the approval of the Stormwater Controls, a Best Management Practice Operation Maintenance Agreement dated September, excuse me, October 16, 2025, relative to the same property.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, 23 Fox Hill Road.
23 Fox Hill is an existing property that is in need of connecting to the existing public sewer line at that location, and the appropriate paperwork, we need the board's authorization to sign it and submit it to DEP.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have 1861 Lower State Road, Monster Tree Stipulation.
I move for the approval of the stipulation settlement between Monster Properties Zoning Hearing Board, Doylestown Township and Doylestown Township, intervenor.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, DTMA Northwest 3 and 4 PFAS Treatment Facility.
Watch those tractor trailers.
Thank you.
Luck. No more.
Yeah. This is for our Doylestown Township Municipal Authority. They're going to be continuing the work with PFAS with the wells 3 and 4, and similar to what they did in Doylestown Hunt, they require a planning module and for the water to be processed through the sewage system. to be processed through the sewage system. And so we have that planning module waiver, as we did for the ones in Doylestown Hunt. These would be for the ones in Charm Cross. We need the board's authorization so we can submit that on their behalf.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, 2025.
You go.
2025 Fee Schedule Amendment for the Parks and Recreation Department.
There are several items in the fee schedule that the Park and Recreation Department is suggesting be amended, and this has to do with the current operation of the new community recreation facility, and what they're kind of finding is people are renting and utilizing the facility. The fees in certain areas are going down, a couple are going up, also a lot of setup with tables and chairs, so adding those fees in as well. So looking for board approval to amend the fee schedule.
So moved. I'll second, but I have a question.
Sure.
So on this sheet, I thought it was, it just doesn't specify that the pricing is per So I just found that. Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, and dollar signs, right?
It says all rentals are two-hour minimums, though.
Okay.
So.
Where does it say that? I'm sorry.
Right under seasonal, like, athletics and stuff, and then, yeah, she has that in there.
It's just not in the. Yeah, it's just not in the, yeah.
Do you want to have them change it?
I mean, it would be easier to understand. I don't know, maybe you don't have any confusion with it, but I was confused when I first. Well, I think, I think you make a good point. It should be clear that that's a per hourly rate. Yeah.
I don't think it's a big ask.
It's not a big ask.
Do we need to bring it back, or can we just?
No, I just think you, if you make it look like that, it'll be fine. I don't think we have to bring it back.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, the motion is, would that change?
Yeah. The motion is to clarify this per hourly rate.
Okay. And the second is Judy?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right, e-bikes, everybody loves e-bikes. E-bike draft ordinance.
All right, good evening. As you all know, we have a draft ordinance of potential e-bike ordinance in the packet for this evening. It is on the agenda this evening mostly for discussion purposes. As Judy mentioned, we met with the Bike and Hike Committee earlier and went through this e-bike ordinance line by line, going through all proposed changes that they had. Anything that they would like to see has been sent to the chief, who gave us back some changes. He would also like to see in regards to how we go through the penalties and violations section to make sure it's in accordance with the rest of the way that the police department handles those. So in addition, we're here this evening just to get feedback from the board, see if there's any other changes you guys are looking for, and then if not, we'll make all those changes and come back to you in November for authorization to advertise.
Anybody have comments on the?
I have nothing to add, actually. I think it's pretty good, the work, what you've done here. All right. Supervisor. I know, I know on the Bike-Hike meeting, there was some good discussion on making sure that we referred to, I guess it was state ordinance, which would also be followed, such as because it doesn't mention the need for people to wear helmets. It doesn't mention an age. I think you have to be 16 or older, right, to ride an e-bike? So they're not in this one, but they're, I guess, a state ordinance.
A lot of those, it would be under state law already, so that's already included in it. I don't know if we have to really spell it out additionally inside the ordinance.
And we do make reference to state law that all incorporated here in this ordinance as well.
And that's perfect. Yep. All right, great. That's efficient, yeah. Great work, everyone. Do I have a motion to draft, do a draft for advertising purposes? What's your motion?
It's not my motion.
No, 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 what do you want? What are we asking for? To advertise?
To draft the e-bike ordinance.
I think to, to draft it. I know. To revise the, revise with all the comments.
You can revise in accordance with the comments, yeah.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Clarifying. Is it, we're doing it to advertise, or are we just redrafting it now?
Just redrafting it. Incorporate, yeah. Okay. I would say it would be to incorporate all of the comments received by the chief, by the Bike-Hike Committee and the board, so that our Solicitor's Office can revise and bring back a draft that we hope the board will authorize for advertisement at your November meeting.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Got it.
Thank you.
That was Judy and Dan, right?
Zoning Hearing Board, we have Bartle.
Bartle, this is a home-based business, and I would leave this matter to the zoning hearing board.
Sounds good. Treasurers' Report.
Move for the approval of the Treasurers' Report for October 21, 2025.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bills List.
I move for the approval of the Bills List for October 21, 2025.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any additional public comment? Or any public comment? Nope. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.